Good evening and welcome to a public hearing for a zoning map change at 833 Buck Lane in Haverford. Our solicitor, Mr. Jim Byrne, is going to lead the proceedings.
Good evening, everyone. I understand Kelly is on the Zoom, correct? Kelly Kirk?
Yes.
And we're being recorded by Arlene and we have two, the homeowners at 833 Buck are also joining us tonight, correct?
Correct.
So just real quick, so everyone knows what this is. This is a zoning map amendment. And as part of it being part of the zoning ordinance, we then have to have a hearing where we allow people to comment on the zoning amendment. And that's what we're doing here tonight. The auditorium here is empty, so there's no one here. And I don't see any other interested parties on the Zoom call, but so we can just proceed now, Kelly, okay?
Sure.
You gave me a packet of documents and they're all related to this 833 Buck Lane. So I have them here and I guess what we can do, you were good enough to pre-mark them all. And I don't know if Arlene has a set as well, but if she doesn't, we can get a set to her.
Absolutely.
So Kelly, could you first just tell us what your, tell us your name and what your position is with the township, please?
I'm Kelly Kirk. I'm the zoning officer. I also do the community planning.
And you prepared the documents in connection with this hearing tonight, is that correct?
I did.
Okay, and it's to change the zoning from institutional at 833 Buck Lane to R1, correct?
R1A.
R1A. And that's what it was zoned before?
Correct.
Okay, and it went to institutional when the school was using the property, correct?
In 2013, the school, Haverford Friends School, had petitioned to rezone the property to institutional for further school use, correct?
But so as part of this amendment, what we're really doing is putting it back to where the zoning was originally, correct?
Exactly.
And there are other R1A parcels surrounding this site, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so now if you would just take us through the different exhibits and, you know, if you could identify it like T1 is this and then tell us what it is.
Sure can. Oh, I can't share my screen. But T1 for T5 are all exhibits demonstrating the, that we met the MPC, the municipal, excuse me, municipal Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code requirements for a zoning map amendment. Thank this T1, which is the resolution announced, announcing the public hearing that we held in June. The actual public notice is T2. T3 is the publication for the Daily Times advertised May 24th and May 31st of this year. T4 is the mailing list and the map of notified properties. And T5 is a photo of the notice posted at 833 Buck Lane. From there, we have the T6, which is the Haverford Township Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. An excerpt of just this portion of their recommendation, followed by T7, the Delaware County Planning Commission Review Letter dated 5/21/2021.
Both of those, both of those planning commissions, Kelly, reviewed this proposed change?
Indeed, they did, and they both recommended approval.
Both recommended approval, okay. Thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Sure. T8 is the letter received from the current property owners dated 4/1/2021.
Does that indicate their approval of this change?
It requests the change themselves, yeah.
Okay.
And T9 is the existing and proposed zoning classification map. T10 is the legal description of 833 Buck Lane. And T11 is a site plan of 833 Buck.
Okay. And just tell us real briefly the reason for this zoning change.
Sure. So the school conveyed the property back in April to the current homeowners. They no longer were planning to use the property institutionally. And when we have a property that is zoned institutional and no longer being used in that manner, the planning commission is requested to make a recommendation to change the classification to the most appropriate zoning district.
Okay, thank you. And it's your intention tonight to move each of these exhibits, T1 through T11, into evidence, correct?
Yes, please.
And Mr. President, I would suggest that we accept those into evidence. Mr. President has indicated he would. And that would be, that would be the end of the hearing from our perspective. I think what we need to do now is open it to the public if anybody has any comments.
I would like the current homeowners, if they don't mind, giving us maybe a synopsis of the letter that they provided to the board commissioners on April 1st.
Okay, that makes sense. Do you mind doing that?
Not at all. Essentially, what we did is we requested the right to put it back to residential because we intend to renovate the property in its entirety and make it our principal residence. So hopefully, we'll be able to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you intend to develop the property in any way, subdivide, create apartments? Anything about that?
At this time, no. The, there's a barn that hopefully we will get to renovate at some point. But that would be, you know, again, we don't intend to subdivide or make it anything other than, at this point, a single-family home for our use.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I jumped in on a little bit. Is there any other members of the public that have anything that they want to add? I don't see or hear from anybody, so I think with that, we can close the record.
Are there any commissioners that have any questions?
And then just for the public notice, we're going to make a decision on this at our regular meeting next Monday night at 7:30 or seven, 7:30.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay.
Okay, with that, we can close the meeting.
Good.
Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
If you like, you can move right into the regular meeting. We got the.
Good evening and welcome to the June Commissioners' Work Session. We did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal matters. Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. McCabe.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Chief Iola, could you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. First item on the agenda is a presentation by Jill Whitcomb in from President and CEO and Kristin Kingery, Chief Operating Officer of the Surrey Services.
Dr. Hart, this presentation, each year, the Board adopts a resolution to approve the use of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. And Surrey Services participates in that process each year. And this year, with the help of the CARES Act, there's a certain amount of funding that's being requested for a rather creative program. And so we felt that it would be a good idea to come before the Board of Commissioners. So we have Kathleen O'Leary of Dunleavy Associates as well. Dunleavy is the firm that administers the grant for the township.
Yes. So thank you very much. Kristin might be having trouble joining us, so I don't see. I'm Jill Whitcomb. Again, I'm the interim president for Surrey Services for Seniors. I know that many of you are probably familiar with us because we've had a very long partnership with Haverford Township. Thank you so much. I think, I think the township's been supporting Surrey for the past seven or eight years and just over $85,000 that we receive from the township to support older adults at our Havertown Center. So thank you very much for that past support. When Kathleen reached out to me and we discussed this opportunity about a program that Surrey has been wanting to start for a while and has made even more important because of the pandemic, we kind of jumped at the chance to talk with you and present this proposal to the township. Is it possible to share the PowerPoint presentation?
I'm going to give it, can you try to share it from your screen or should I run it from here?
I can if you, if I have the ability to share, so yeah.
I think you do now.
I believe I do. Okay. So. Okay. So the program that we are looking to begin is an innovative pilot program that we have called the Surrey Academy. And I know that you have supported Surrey for a long time, but I just wanted to share with you, just reiterate our mission of Surrey. Surrey has been in existence for 40 years. We were founded on a philosophy of neighbor helping neighbor. Our founder, Jean LaRouche, began this organization, a grassroots organization, really from her home when she noticed older adults in her community having trouble maintaining their independence in home and staying in their homes. So she started with getting her neighbors to give rides to older adults, to the grocery store, to, to the doctor's appointments, to the pharmacy, and Surrey has just grown enormously from there. We now have four centers, three in Delaware County, Havertown Media and Brumall. And our headquarters are in, is in Devon at our Center for Healthy Living. And our mission too is to inspire and enable all of us as we age to live with independence and dignity. And we're really focused on creating a leading, dynamic community for aging adults. And part of that is by developing groundbreaking programs like the one I'm going to talk about tonight. Just wanted to share with you really quickly, I know I have about five or 10 minutes. So I'm going to race through this and then open it up for questions. Hopefully, many of you have seen our proposal. And I don't see Kristin on here yet, so. This is our planning construct. So Surrey is really, our community is the heart of everything. This is why it's a center, again, on a neighbor helping neighbor philosophy. Our core strategic priorities are engagement and purpose, health and wellness, support and assistance, and innovation and leadership. We're surrounded by this wonderful community, our leadership, our staff, volunteers, philanthropy, partnerships and collaboration like we have with Haverford Township, our financial resources and our governance. We have a very, very strong board and surrounding all of that is our mission and core values. So. So we have realized, you know, unquestionably, that pandemic has, has really changed all of our lives in so many ways. But it's had a great effect on older adults. As many of you know, I don't, I don't even need to tell you this. You've probably experienced it in your own family, in your own community, in your own neighborhood. But the mental and physical health that older adults have, have really been compromised in this past year and a half due to the isolation and, and lack of personal interaction. Seniors, you know, they canceled medical appointments. They did not manage their health wells because they were afraid to go to the doctors. And this has led to avoid, avoidable complications and a lot of seniors which are, who are in worse off than they were pre-pandemic. So their health has been failing a little bit. They've experienced a high level of depression and anxiety as we all pretty much have throughout the pandemic. And we've really seen a growing food insecurity among seniors during this pandemic. I don't know if it's a result of the pandemic or it's because the stigma surrounding food insecurity in older adults has really been lifted because of the pandemic. You know, whereas before, you know, two years ago, a senior would have gone without food and never admitted it to anyone at Surrey. And now, really, that stigma has been, has been lifted a little bit. So we're seeing that food insecurity among seniors grow and grow and grow. And because of all this, we have a larger population of older adults who are now really requiring help to be able to remain independent and in their homes. And if you'd allow me one moment, I'm going to introduce my colleague, my Chief Operating Officer, Kristin Kingery, who's down there under my name, I think, at the bottom, so.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, sorry about the, the trouble getting in.
So, you know, COVID-19 really exposed a problem and that is a great need for home care services. And that now is coupled with a lack of qualified and trained caregivers in the, in the workforce. You know, a growing number of adults are choosing to remain in their homes rather than go to a senior living facility. And I think we all understand why. So many family members have had to take up the mantle of caregiver, you know, move, have their parents move in with them, move in with their parents. Many of those folks that were able to work at home and take care of older adults are now having to go back to work, leaving, leaving the seniors at home alone. And many of our caregivers and many of our folks in our workforce have lost jobs. And this is especially prevalent in the hospitality and service industry. And those folks we're seeing right now may be slow to return to work because of unemployment or they might not work at home at all, or they have children that they have to care for and, and the wages that they earn just aren't enough to pay for childcare anymore and leave home. So our answer to this is an innovative solution. And we really, the Surrey Academy is meant to address the lack of qualified caregivers to support family members who are increasingly becoming the primary caregivers and to support those older adults who don't have that support system. Maybe their older children live out of state or maybe they don't even have families at all. So we're, we're proposing the Surrey Academy located at the Havertown Center. And this academy is going to offer a comprehensive education and training program for both caregiver candidates, but as importantly, for, for family members that are home taking care of their loved ones, ensuring that both the professional caregivers and those family members have the skills and the knowledge to effectively care for their loved ones at home. And in addition, it's going to increase access to needed service. It's going to provide higher standards of care in this industry. And it will also provide an opportunity for workforce development here in Delaware County, right in Haverford Township. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin to discuss the academy in detail.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Jill. You know, I think, I think Jill's done a great job of explaining the, the concerns that we have for the older adults. And, you know, I think over the last 10 years, I've been in, I've been in home care for over 15 years. And in the last 10 years, we've seen an increase in the shortage of caregivers. And most of the caregivers that were providing this type of care are retiring. That's the age group of, of the people who were the original caregivers. And the younger people are choosing careers in, with other competitors like Amazon and grocery stores and things like that. And they're just not choosing this type of caregiving. So currently, we've got about 40 million people who are 65 or older and about 50% of those folks are in need of or will be in need of care. And as the baby boomers turn 65 by the year 2030, there'll be 69 million people over 65 who will, and 50% of those people will need care. So we're really going to be in dire straits and definitely need more people. So the workforce development piece is really important. The academy offers a free training to people who would like to have a career path in healthcare and working with, with older adults. The Pennsylvania state and our licensing requires that people have 40 hours of training or a, or at least one year of paid experience in order to be able to be considered a direct care worker in the state of Pennsylvania. So the academy would offer that 40 hours of training free so that folks who don't have any skills or would like to make some changes in skills can have a free training to be able to prepare them to be caregivers in the home and help us take care of these seniors as we get more of them as baby boomers turn 65. So it's really a professional expansion. We'll be able to offer, it's a, it's a combination of online training, in-person training, skills development, internship. Surrey has a lot of great opportunities for people, for these staff people to engage with a number of different seniors and a number of different programs. And as Jill said, it's an opportunity to be able to provide family support. Last year, I believe I read there was about 37 billion hours of unpaid caregiving in the United States. And these are family members who most likely are not trained and they are probably feeling very frustrated and are not doing the type of job that they would like to be doing with their, their older parents or family members because they don't have the knowledge or skill. So we have the opportunity to be able to do that as well and help reduce their stress because they can be a lot more efficient and, and effective. A lot of these other programs that I've seen in the area cost anywhere from $400 to $1,600 for this type of training. And so being able to offer this for free would be great. We also would be able to provide stipends to folks so that if, to be able to pay for driving back and forth and, and just some small expenses if they do come and work for us. We would also be able to offer them some consistent work. There's definitely going to be consistent work as, as people age and want to stay at home. So we'll be able to do, offer them consistent work. I want to switch the slide there. So the over, the overview of the program really is just recruiting and finding people who really want to do this job, finding people maybe who have been companions that would like to get a little bit more training in order to become a caregiver. So they'll have training, we'll have good supervision. The, the folks here in this, in this photograph are two of our staff people right now who have been with us a long time and are really very good caregivers. And it gives them an opportunity to be trainers. And so they would be the ones that would be in the field training the new caregiver. So it, it offers them an opportunity for some advancement as well. There'd be some incentives to secure employment. If, if they come with us, we would be able to give them some incentives to stay. And then we also would be able to provide ongoing education and support so that they can continue to grow in their career. So why choose Surrey? Why is it that we should, that it's, we're a good organization to do this? We have so many services that we offer to the people in the community. We're very well respected and well-known in the community. We offer transportation and nutrition, information and referral. We have senior centers, R End Care Managers, Geriatric Care Managers. So we, we provide everything that anyone needs in order to be able to stay at home. And so we feel like this is just another piece that we would be able to provide to folks in the community in order to help support the seniors that live in Delaware and Chester Counties. Here's just an example. So this is one of our caregivers. And he called us this winter when this particular client, Richard's heat was not working. And we were able to work with the folks at Surrey to figure out what we were going to do to help him. And, and they were able to secure a new HVAC system for less than half the cost than it would have been just, you know, calling random repair people. And then just an update, last week, this man took a turn for the worse and this caregiver called the office and shared that he really didn't feel comfortable leaving Richard alone and that he really needed more support. And through the relationships that we have with other people in the community, we were able to secure 16 more hours of care for him. And through collaboration with a local hospice, we were able to get him some nursing care as well as the equipment that he needed in order to be able to stay home throughout the, the rest of his day. So it was just really wonderful to have a caregiver like this who, who knew that he just needed to reach out to us in order to be able to help a client that he cares for a lot.
So our goal for this pilot program is, this one-year pilot program is to really successfully train 50 professional caregivers in the Delaware County community and the Haverford Township community and 50 family members that need that type and want that type of support. You know, this is something that, you know, as I said, we've had a strong partnership with Haverford Township for many, many years. And we see this as an opportunity and a response to COVID particularly to really create a new model program in the, in this community that can be replicated in other communities to address the lack of trained caregivers that are, that we're seeing. You know, we, we look towards this as a workforce development program. We look towards this as a, as an opportunity to help more seniors in our community remain independent in their home. But it, but again, Surrey is so qualified to do this because of the comprehensive approach that we take and because of our mission is to help older people live independently in their homes. And not just with the caregiving, but with all the wraparound support services that Surrey provides. If we're providing care for someone in their home and we notice their cupboards are empty, we can do home-delivered meals. We can do our virtual programming. We can provide transportation to the doctor's office or we can provide a volunteer who will do grocery shopping for them or other yard work or chores around their home. So it's really a comprehensive approach that, that Surrey takes to helping older adults remain in their home. And this is just one piece of it, but it's a big piece of it. You know, when the pandemic hit in March, we lost 100 clients in four months and 80 caregivers. And now we're getting, you know, three to five calls a day from families that want to get those caregivers back in their home. And yet our workforce is so depleted and people aren't coming back. So we really need to do something in our communities to, to create these jobs and create these opportunities for, that will help families in our community. So I know we kind of rushed through this. I, I want to be very respectful of your time, but I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have for Kristin or myself right now that we could possibly answer for you?
Thank you for the presentation. So the individuals who go through the program, at the end of the program, they would be eligible to, you might, they might work for Surrey or they might work for someone else or?
Yes, yes. So we would love for them to work for Surrey. But their qualifications that they would have completing the, the academy would qualify them to work at any home care agency as a personal caregiver or a living care.
And as far as family members, I know that at times, if seniors are eligible for home care, that family members who are trained can get paid to provide that home care. Is that what?
That happens sometimes through the county. So those folks can get paid through the county. We, we don't have any caregivers that take care of family members at Surrey. And maybe Kristin can speak more to that. But what, what we're seeing right now out there in the community is there's a lot of folks that do qualify for county subsidies and COSA supports that and they have a reimbursement program for people of a certain income. And then there's those folks, obviously, a lot of folks in Haverford Township and the main line that it can afford private pay. What we're seeing now is a growth of the people in the middle that don't qualify for those subsidies yet, for those county or state subsidies, and yet they can't afford the private pay. So Surrey also does additional fundraising. I'm also the chief advancement officer as I'm the interim CEO. We do a lot of fundraising to, to raise home care, our home care subsidy fund. So we can provide those services. We don't want to turn anyone away. We want to be able to have the, have the direct care workers and have the ability to provide subsidies for those folks that are caught in the middle to really reduce their hourly fee and provide that support for them regardless of their inability to pay full price.
Thank you. How about, and recruitment? How are you going to go about recruiting?
So we just, we just hired a new recruiting officer in our home care department. She comes with a wealth of knowledge in home care recruitment. So we will be working with her to recruit for the academy. We will also be publicizing it through, through Career Link and other areas like that, through different foundations. Like we have connections with the Foundation for Delaware County. So we would have them help us get the word out through local press, whatever way we could to, if this program were to be approved, to really introduce this and make a big splash and try to, try to get as many people involved as possible.
I think the other piece, if I could just jump in here, we, we end up getting a lot of people that apply who don't have experience, who are interested in the job and we are not able to hire them because of our licensing, nor do we feel that they'd be successful without the training. So we would, we would also share it with them and encourage them to join the training when they call looking for a job.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Thank you for everything that Surrey does and thank you for the presentation. We'll be discussing it further, I think, next week.
Great, and thank you. Great, and thank you for your thoughtful consideration and all your past support. We certainly, certainly appreciate it.
Great.
Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
The next, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the renaming of the Haverford Reserve Community Park, changing the name to the Andy Lewis Park. Mr. Aliva?
So, I, I propose to the, the park board that they change the name to Andy Lewis Community Park, or change the, the name of the building. The park board decided that it would be better if the park itself, the community park itself be named after Andy. So, that's what I'm, I'm asking for this board to, term is that we name a community park, which is now called the Haverford Township Community Park, and name it after, name it Andy Lewis Community Park.
Mr. President? I'm sorry, I concur with Mario's request. I think Commissioner Lewis did an outstanding job in ensuring that the, the crack, it is what it is today because of him, and he put a hell of a lot of effort into it against a lot of controversy and, and issues and, and the related to that. So, I, I think it's, it would be prudent for us to, to do that.
And, and not just the crack, the, just the whole?
Well, the whole, yeah. When I mean the crack, I, it encompasses the entire area, the fields, the soccer fields, the trails, everything.
Yeah, so that the, that whole development there probably wouldn't have the fields that it does if it weren't for him. So, I feel that we should name the park after it.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes?
President, I think it's a fine idea. I think Andy would be very proud to have his name associated with the park. As I said, we all go back to that time, back in '05 and '06 and '07, we had great controversy surrounding the plan we ultimately adopted. Commissioner Lewis was a very, very, very powerful influence on helping drive this board to do the right thing, and I think that would be a very good way to honor him, honor his memory.
Thank you, Larry. You know, Larry, Larry was part of that whole, you know, along with Steve and, and those who were on the board at, at the time remember how difficult a time that was and what we had to do to, to turn this. It was literally trying to turn a, a train around, and, and he was able to do it.
And if it weren't, weren't for him, the fields would be on slopes and stuff, yeah, steep slopes, yeah, steep slopes, yeah.
He brought it out, and you know, Steve, you know, between all of us, we, we, we all followed that and, and were able to, to turn, turn that locomotive around. And, and, you know, it's, it's a great park, it's a great, the crack is, is wonderful. And if it wasn't for him, there's a lot of people can, can be taken out of the puzzle and, and me being one of them, and, and everything would have, would have happened, but without him, I don't think it, I don't think it would have happened. I would like to see this park named that, and I appreciate the support of the, the rest of the board.
Is there, do we have in mind an event to do this? And?
Yeah, so, so we've, we're working with the park board to have an event, like September, October timeframe. Still don't have an exact date, but to have a renaming ceremony up there, including a, a walk maybe in, in memory of. So, we'll propose, we'll bring that to the board in, in a month or two, once we, we get a little further down the, the road with planning.
Sounds great, so we'll vote on that next week.
Thank you.
Next item is commissioner committee updates, any updates?
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I just, I, finance committee has met and is planning to meet again to discuss, you know, the act wrong, but the government's money that's being provided to various townships. We, as a committee, will be getting together again to talk about ideas of appropriate allocations and then.
Anyone else? Any committee updates?
Also, I, I guess it's, I should report on the, the solar ad hoc committee had, we were moving with all deliberate speed, as they say in the Supreme Court, to try to get a report to the, to the board this, this week about our progress. They've run into not unexpected delays in being able to conclude the best first place for us to put the, to, to place the, the first solar array. And so, I think our, their goal now is to get all their, get all their Ts crossed and their Is dotted and come back to us in July with recommendations of consultants and, and suppliers and with the, their recommendation of the best site for our first, first solar array.
Think possibly next month?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think that's a, Dave stopped me if I got that wrong, but I, I think it's quite reasonable for us to expect a July report.
Great.
Mr. President, one other update. I believe that Kelly sent an email out regarding the comprehensive plan, and we're going to be getting that together again. I think she gave us some dates, those of us that are on that committee. I don't know if you saw it, and if you didn't, you need to respond to it. And Kelly, are you still there, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, want to provide the dates again?
I think the most agreed-upon date at this point was June 23rd.
Okay, Kelly, I didn't get one, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll resend.
Yeah, and Commissioner Holmes didn't get one either, so.
Sure.
What day is that, Kelly? What day?
Oh, gosh, good question. The 23rd is a Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Police Department crime update.
Thank you, commissioners. Good to see everybody back in one room. So, the monthly chief's report for May of 2021, criminal arrests 16, juvenile arrests zero, traffic citations 97, non-traffic citations 24, 48 written warnings, 440 parking tickets. Had a robbery at the Giant Store. Employee reports a male and a female were at the self, self-checkout and did not scan all the items they, ran out to their vehicles and took off after punching an employee in the face. The driver of the vehicle drove away, almost striking another employee. All employees refused to write statements, and the store will not provide a video until they spoke to their corporate office. So, there are some of the things we face sometimes for investigation. 1900 Block of Westchester Pike for a resident of a ground-floor apartment was awakened by a loud bang. Police responded, couldn't find anything. 400 Block of Pilgrim Lane, the office building, building owner reports a broken window and a screen laying on the mulch outside the lobby window. Building was not entered. Aggravated assault, 100 Block of North Eagle. Police responded to a residence for a neighbor dispute. Another one, a guest who was threatening to kill a neighbor, was refusing to leave the residence, attempting to push past police. Taken into custody and charged with assault, resisting arrest and several other charges. Warm weather is here, COVID is over, back to our vehicle being entered again. We have 20, 20 vehicles entered, a lot in your ward, Jerry, and then a lot on Westchester Pike. Videos that we have retrieved has shown young people on bicycles riding up and down the streets, trying different cars, and then they'll dump a bike and steal another bike. We have another video of a white van pulling up and throwing bicycles in the back. They deploy their group, I guess, and then they hit another neighborhood, then the bikes are found later on. So, it is up and running again in, in a bad way, but it is all unlocked vehicles. Nothing is broken into with a broken window. So, once again, I'll just urge everyone to please lock their vehicles.
Chief, may I ask you a question?
Certainly.
What time of the day is that happen?
This is night. Anywhere from 1:30 to 5 o'clock in the morning.
1:30 in the morning?
Yes.
So, 5?
Correct.
Okay. I wonder if we could post something? There's that Nextdoor site?
Sure, yeah.
Post it on there, remind?
We, we continually do that. We will put it on social media again, and we'll take care of that first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and maybe put it on our webpage.
Sure, absolutely. Yep.
You know, because, quite frankly, I mean, it just doesn't happen in Haverford Town, it happens everywhere.
No, no, it's absolutely right. Everybody has it.
People forget, leave their, their doors, their car unlocked?
Yes.
And leave valuable equipment in there.
So, it goes all the way out to Chester County. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a big, big, big issue for all of us. So, we have four bicycle thefts for the month, and a lot of them are related to the vehicles being entered also. We had four K-9 usages, 2800 Block of Berkeley Road for perimeter security. Police responded to the residents at the request of Delaware State Police to check on a possible suspect from stolen vehicle chase. He was not home. 200 Block of Strathmore Road, domestic situation. 200 Block of Claymore for an open door, negative results inside the house, and we went down the call and helped them for an open sniff for drugs. That's my report.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to items for next week, we're approval of more settlements and stipulations of counsel as we've been doing the last several months in regards to reassessments. We'll also have the AFFF Fire Foam Litigation Joint Prosecution Agreement. This is an agreement to enter into a joint prosecution agreement with the DA of Delaware County and the Primo Secane Westbrook Fire, Westbrook Farm Fire Company of Upper Darby for the joint prosecution of claims against the manufacturers of firefighting foam to recover, among other items, the costs of soil and water remediation at our firefighting training site. I don't know if, Mr. Byrne, do you have any other?
No, I think you summed that. Sorry, I think you summed that up pretty well. It's a, there was some sites found by the district attorney's office, and they have notified us, and we're going to work with them and with the Primo Secane area to get these sites cleaned up.
Thank you. Any comments?
All right, no, other than that site is actually in the first word and certainly keep our residents apprised of any potential issues that may arise, but we don't expect anything.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Solicitor, could we just make clear to the audience that while you're referring to the district attorney's office and this agreement refers to a joint prosecution agreement, we are not talking about criminal, is not a criminal investigation. There is no issues involving any criminality. It's just what we call prosecuting as plaintiffs, a potential action against these manufacturers of this equipment. District attorney, people associate that with criminal law, but they also have a civil side.
Right, and I guess the, yeah, the, I guess there could be some civil fines, you know, to the companies on the, that the district attorney could bring, but that's not what our, our joint prosecution agreement is to pursue the civil end of it, to get the site cleaned and to get the cost reimbursed for, for that cleaning.
Thank you. We were next week to discuss a revision of our shade tree ordinance. Unfortunately, will not be ready this month. I will reassure the Shade Tree Commission that we should have this on the agenda for next month. We've been going back and forth with some final wording. We will have the second reading of a dedication of Jack's Way. Will also be an ordinance for rezoning of 833 Buck Lane. We had a public hearing prior to tonight's meeting. Resolution for the approval of the CDBG and CDBG COVID applications. Did have a presentation prior, in earlier part of this meeting from Suri Center. Now, Mr. Berman, do you want to discuss any of the other items that might be on that list?
The other items are the standard community development block grant for the home improvement program and other similar items that we, that we include in that resolution each year.
Great, thank you. Contract awards, the play equipment for Richland Park, and there will be proclamations, a Juneteenth, National Freedom Day proclamation, as well as proclamations for various Eagle Scouts. Do any other commissioners have any comments? There being no further business, can I?
And make a motion to adjourn?
Meeting is adjourned.